Councillor Trion Wait.
President.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. We have five measures for markup in the Committee of the Whole. If there's no objection, I'm going to move items A, C, and D in block. And these are nominations to the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. The Commission on Arts and Humanities was established by the Commission on the Arts and Humanities Act in 1975. The Commission is now an independent agency within the district government, is designated by the National Endowment for the Arts as the state of the arts agency for, as the state arts agency for the District of Columbia. Its role is to evaluate, initiate action on matters relating to the arts and humanities and to encourage programs and the development of programs to promote progress in the arts and humanities. In addition, the mission of the Commission is to provide grants, programs, and educational activities that encourage diverse artistic expression and learning opportunities so that all District of Columbia residents and visitors can experience the district's rich arts humanities, very rich arts and humanities communities affected with the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Support Act. There were some additional changes, actually, I would refer to as the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Support Act, where the council reduced the size of the commission from eighteen members to twelve members, with the commission being reduced by two positions each year until the total number of members is twelve. After June 30th, 2024, there will be four members whose terms expire in 2027, four expiring in 2026, and six, and twelve expiring in 2020. I misstated that, and four expiring in 2025, for a total of twelve members. And the three that I'm moving in block and one that I'll move following that would be the four whose terms would expire in June 30th, 2027. As we noted in our committee report on the budget for fiscal year 2025, the report that was adopted by the council a month ago, the committee remains concerned that the commission has not struck the best balance between nurturing the arts and promoting economic development, especially in light of the council's concern for the revitalization of post-pandemic downtown. Supporting and promoting downtown theaters, museums, pop-ups, public art, and street events downtown can be of enormous benefit to the city without sacrificing the goals of nurturing nascent artists and while requiring more ethnic and racial diversity in the arts. The commission is funded through a dedication of five percent of general sales tax revenues. As a result of budget pressures, the mayor has capped the commission's growth at two percent a year and limited transfers of additional tax revenue recovered by the central collections units. All that will be changing this year. Despite this, the commission's budget has increased substantially over the past ten years. Unfortunately, the commission has not used its largesse in an impactful way. There's no program or strategy that has compelled political support. For instance, as the city struggles to revitalize post-pandemic downtown arts programming, as it has, as the city struggles to revitalize post-pandemic downtown, arts programming is overlooked as a strategy because the commission has not oriented its grant making in that way. The three resolutions that I'm moving in block for markup, PR 25-641, Commission on the Arts and Humanities, Kimber Lovett-Mantiti, Confirmation Resolution of 2024, PR 25-642, Commission on the Arts and Humanities, Gretchen Moore, excuse me, not that one, PR 25-643, Commission on the Arts and Humanities, Reginald Van Lee, Confirmation Resolution of 2024, and PR 25-644, Commission on the Arts and Humanities, Cora Masters-Berry, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Each of those was introduced at the request of the mayor in February 20th of this year. The Committee of the Whole held a public roundtable on April 12th, 2024. We received no testimony or comments in opposition to any of these three nominees. More specifically, with regard to PR 25-641, this would confirm the mayor's nomination of Kimber Lovett-Mantiti for reappointment as a member of the Commission on Arts and Humanities for a term to end June 30th, 2027. Ms. Lovett-Mantiti is a resident of Ward Four. She has a bachelor's degree from James Madison University, a master of law in social policy, as well as a master of social work from Bryn Mawr Graduate School of Social Work and Social Research. She's currently Regional Director for the Maryland DC Region for Keller Williams Realty International. And there's more about her in the report. At her confirmation hearing, she testified about her commitment to ensuring that all district residents have access to the arts to help uplift marginalized voices in all eight wards. With regard to PR 25-643, this would confirm the mayor's nomination of Reginald Van Lee for reappointment as a member of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities for a term to end June 30th, and also as a member, excuse me, also as chairperson of the commission for a term to end June 30th, 2027. Mr. Van Lee is a resident of Ward Two. He received his Bachelor of Science and Master of Science in Civil Engineering from MIT and a Master of Business Administration from Harvard University. He's currently Partner and Chief Transformation Officer of the Carlisle Group, where he helps the firm develop strategies to enhance business processes. He has a long history of involvement with the arts. He was appointed to the Board of Trustees of the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts by President Obama, formerly appointed to the President's Committee on the Arts and Humanities. There's more in the committee report. At his confirmation hearing, Mr. Van Lee testified about his three years of service as Chair of the Commission. He discussed his main focus during that time, including making the commission a higher-performing organization, looking for additional funding opportunities, and looking at possible international arts event to drive the local economy and assist in downtown revitalization. With regard to PR 25-644, this would confirm the mayor's nomination for reappointment. Cora Masters-Berry, her term to expire June 30th, 2027. Ms. Barry is a Ward Eight resident. She received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Texas Southern University and a Master of Arts from Howard University. Currently, she serves as CEO and member of the Board of Directors of the Recreation Wishlist Committee, which she founded in 1994. At her confirmation hearing, Ms. Masters-Berry testified about her experience on the commission, in particular, her work on the task force working to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion in grant making as well as implementation of the task force's forty-four recommendations. As I said, each of these was introduced at the request of the mayor in February, and a roundtable was held on April 12th, and the committee received no testimony or comments in opposition to any of these nominations. I move the prints in block would leave for staff to make technical conforming, technical and conforming changes. Is there discussion on the prints? We will have a voice vote. The vote is on PR 25-641, PR 25-643, and PR 25-644. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not hearing any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. I will note Councillor Tran White is participating virtually as part of the vote. I move the reports for these three resolutions would leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes as their discussion. On the reports, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. I'll do clearances in a second. I'm going to move next PR 25-25-642. This is the Commission on Arts and Humanities, Gretchen Wharton, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. I want to note that earlier Councillor Pinto stated that she was going to recuse herself in this matter, and she is currently absent from the dais. I'm not going to repeat what I said about the Commission on Arts and Humanities. That is the background and history. This resolution, PR 25-644, 642, was introduced at the request of the mayor on February 20th. The committee held a roundtable on April 12th, I believe I said. You received no testimony or comments in opposition. This resolution would confirm the mayor's nomination of Gretchen Wharton for reappointment as a member of the Commission on Arts and Humanities for a term to end June 30th, 2027. Ms. Wharton is a resident of Ward Six in the Shaw neighborhood. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland and continued her education at Harvard University, University of Pennsylvania Wharton School, and Georgetown University. She retired from Zerax Corporation, where she worked in marketing and sales for thirty years. She's been a member of the Commission on Arts and Humanities for many years and currently chairs its Grants Committee. At her confirmation hearing, Ms. Wharton testified about her experience as a long-term member of the commission. She discussed the evolving role of the commission, especially since becoming independent, that is, the commission becoming independent, and the increase in grant funding resulting from dedicated funding. I think I'll switch it up a little. If there's no objection, I'll move both print and report together with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the print and report would leave for staff say aye.
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 Opposed? Again, Councillor Tran White is participating virtually. He voted in the affirmative. The ayes have it unanimously. With regard to these four resolutions, Madam General Counsel, are these measures legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, they are.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete for each?
Once the reports and hearing records are filed.
Madam Budget Director, do the measures fiscal impact statements comply with council requirements?
Yes, they do.
And that's because no fiscal impact statements required?
Correct.
Okay. And there is no fiscal impact, because these are all reappointments. Without objection, PR 25-641, PR 25-643, and PR 25-644 will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. And PR 25-642 will be considered non-consent on today's legislative meeting. The last item for markup in the Committee of the Whole is PR, excuse me, no, is PR, Agenda says bill. PR 25-712, Historic Preservation Review Board, Gabrielle Miller, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Purpose of this resolution is to confirm the mayor's nomination of Gabrielle Miller as an, for appointment as an architect, excuse me, as an archaeologist member of the Historic Preservation Review Board, her term to expire July 21st, 2026. Ms. Miller is a Ward Six resident. She's worked in academia for almost ten years as a program specialist and archaeologist with the Center for the Study of Slavery and Slave Wrecks Project at the Smithsonian National Museum of African American History and Culture, and a lab manager with the Historical Archaeology and Heritage Conservation Laboratory. She's a member of the Society of Black Archaeologists and the Society for Historical Archaeology. She earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in anthropology, a Master's of Applied Archaeology, and a PhD in African Diaspora Archaeology, all from the University of Arizona. The Historic Preservation Review Board was created by act of the council in 1978, includes a section declaring the purposes behind the legislation, which include to protect and enhance landmarks and districts, quote, "which represent distinctive elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and archaeological history," unquote, and to turn, and in turn, to, quote, "safeguard the city's historic, aesthetic, and cultural heritage," unquote, in order to foster civic pride in the history of the city, to enhance and perpetuate tourism, to bolster the economy, and to generally promote the use of the district's landmarks and historic districts, quote, "for the education, pleasure, and welfare of the people," unquote, of the city. Board is composed of nine members appointed by the mayor after confirmation by the council. The federal regulations for state review boards require that all board members have demonstrated competence, interest, or knowledge in historic preservation. Additionally, a majority of the members must meet the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualification standards. The Secretary of Standards specify professional qualifications for the disciplines of history, archaeology, architectural history, architecture, and historic architecture. And Ms. Miller is being nominated as an archaeologist member of the board. During her confirmation hearing, Ms. Miller testified to the importance of the board in providing guidance and leadership to shaping the district's cultural landscape. She stated that she will follow the historic preservation regulations while listening to and considering the viewpoints of affected residents by finding creative solutions that honor history. Ms. Miller meets qualifications for serving as an archaeologist member of the board, has demonstrated knowledge of and interest in historic preservation. As I think I indicated, this resolution was introduced at the request of the mayor in March 28th, and the Committee of the Whole held a public roundtable on May 23rd, and has received no testimony or comments in opposition to these nominations. Without objection, I move both the print and report would leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? Hearing, or after all that robust discussion, the vote will be on the print and report with leave for staff. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? I don't hear any no votes. I'll note Councilmember Tran White is participating virtually. The ayes have it unanimously. Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Once the report and hearing record is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. We'll turn now to consideration of measures from other committees. The first three measures are from the Committee on Housing chaired by Councilmember Robert White. The first is PR 25-684 Housing Production Trust Fund Board Chapman Todd Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Chairman. The Housing Production Trust Fund Board has nine members and is tasked with advising the mayor on how to use district money to create housing opportunities for neighbors with the lowest incomes. Board members have different experiences and expertise, ranging from representing tenant associations to representing the financial services industry. Board members can serve as a resource to the public, the mayor, and the council for how to spend our dollars to improve housing outcomes. But right now, the board has too many vacancies and is underutilized. Out of its nine members, only two are actively serving. One is serving on an expired term, and six positions are vacant. This knowledge gap is not good for our city. Throughout this year's budget process, I focus on why the money we're putting into our programs isn't translating into the results residents deserve. My office hears from people daily who are trying to lead better lives but are stuck because they're one paycheck away from losing the roof over their head. Something has to change. And in a budget year like this one, where we have less money for affordable housing, we need creative, community-based solutions to get us to better outcomes. The work of a fully filled HPTF board can help foster those ideas, and today's measure is a start to refilling the vacant positions. Proposed Resolution 25-684 would confirm Chapman Todd as a third active member on the board for a term to end January 14th, 2025. Because of this short-term period, my team is working with Moda on longer-term appointments, which we expect to see in the coming months. Without council action, Mr. Todd's appointment would be deemed disapproved on June 26th, 2024. Throughout this nomination process, Mr. Todd has demonstrated his commitment to creating meaningful employment and housing opportunities for residents coming out of homelessness and residents with low incomes. He serves as a member of the District's Interagency Council on Homelessness for over 15 years, served as an ANC for four years, and has worked and served on the boards of several nonprofits over the years, including CNHED, DC Central Kitchen, and Catholic Charities. In his current role, Mr. Todd leads a company that provides case management and other residential services. I appreciate Mr. Todd's focus on incorporating needed services into the housing landscape so that people feel supported once they move into their homes. Having this perspective on the board will continue to be an asset. The community unanimously supported Mr. Todd's nomination, and I encourage the council to approve his nomination today. Thank you, Chairman. So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Is there, are there questions for Councilmember White? Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Sorry, having some technical difficulties this morning. Yes.
Madam Budget Director, the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Because it's a confirmation resolution, and therefore there is none. But I'll ask you this question for each of these. Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. There's no objection. We'll consider the next two resolutions in block. They're both to the Housing Finance Agency. PR 25-716 Board of Directors of the District of Columbia Housing Finance Agency Heather Wellington Confirmation Resolution of 2014, and PR 25-717 Board of Directors of the District of Columbia Housing Finance Agency Carrie Robinson Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Chairman. PR 25-716 would confirm Heather Wellington's appointment, reappointment to the board of the DC Housing Finance Agency. The DC Housing Finance Agency is an independent agency that was established to support and expand homeownership and rental housing opportunities for low-to-moderate income residents. The agency is overseen by a five-member board made up of DC residents with diverse experience, expertise, including mortgage lending, finance, home building, real estate, architecture, planning, and community or consumer interests. This board ensures that the agency's programs effectively meet the needs of district residents, including the Home Purchase Assistance Program, also known as HPPAP, which provides necessary financial support for aspiring homeowners. Recently, I had the opportunity to visit Krish, a first-time homebuyer whose dream of homeownership became a reality thanks to HPPAP and the work of my office. It was incredible to celebrate this milestone with him, and he shared great insights about ways to improve the program for future homebuyers. I expect DC HFA will continue to play a key role in ensuring the continued success of programs like HPPAP, particularly during these challenging times in our housing market. PR 25-716 would reappoint Ms. Heather Wellington, a Ward five resident and a member of the DC Housing Finance Agency Board of Directors with experience in home building, real estate, architecture, or planning for a term to end June 28th, 2025. Without council action, this measure will be deemed disapproved on September 22nd, 2024. My committee held a public roundtable for this nomination on May 23rd, 2024. Ms. Wellington's nomination was approved unanimously by the Committee on Housing a week later. At the roundtable, we learned about Ms. Wellington's extensive experience in commercial real estate development and management. Ms. Wellington holds a Bachelor of Business Administration from George Washington University and a Master of Science in Real Estate Development from the University of Maryland College Park. Professionally, Ms. Wellington began her career as a property manager at a business named Combined Properties, where she managed over 1.5 million square feet of retail space. She then joined the JBG Companies as a Development Associate, where she oversaw the development of over 1,000 hotel units and 500,000 square feet of office space. Ms. Wellington currently serves as Senior Vice President at FD Stonewater, where she manages significant development projects, including multi-use developments and major office renovations. The second DC Housing Finance Agency Board nomination for today is that of Carrie Robinson. Ms. Robinson is a Ward six resident and is a member of the DC Housing Finance Agency Board of Directors with experience in finance for a term to end June 28th, 2026. As a note, this measure was originally named the Board of Directors of the District of Columbia Housing Finance Agency Carrie Cohen Confirmation Resolution of 2024, but the committee was made aware during the markup process. Another minute, Mr. Chairman?
Without objection.
Thank you. That Ms. Robinson's name changed. Without council action, this measure will be deemed disapproved on September 22nd, 2024. My committee held a public roundtable for this nomination on May 23rd, 2024. Ms. Robinson's nomination was approved unanimously by the Committee on Housing a week later. At the roundtable, we learned about Ms. Robinson's comprehensive experience in finance. Ms. Robinson received her Bachelor's of Business Administration in Finance from Howard University. Ms. Robinson then pursued her Master of Business Administration at Northwestern University's Kellogg School of Management, where she specialized in real estate, innovation, and entrepreneurship. Professionally, Ms. Robinson began her career at JP Morgan in New York, where she served as an associate on the private bank investment team. There, she managed a $300 million client portfolio, conducted investment modeling, and provided insightful financial recommendations. In 2016, Ms. Robinson founded Bright Horizon Ventures LLC, where she has since developed, managed, and executed over $360 million in real estate asset transactions. Her projects, ranging from hospitality to multifamily and single-family residential developments, showcase her ability to navigate complex financial environments. Ms. Robinson brings a wealth of experience in investing and financial development to the board and is qualified to continue serving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move PR 25-716 and PR 25-717, and ask that they be placed on the consent agenda today.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there questions for Councilmember White? Madam General Counsel, are these two measures legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, they are.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete for each?
Yes.
Madam Budget Director, do the measure's fiscal impact statements comply with council requirement?
Yes.
Without objection, these measures, measures will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. So there's no objection. We'll consider the next five resolutions in block. They are each a nomination regarding the Commission on Health Equity. They were reported out of the Committee on Health chaired by Councilmember Christina Henderson. I think most of the rest of the agenda came from the Committee on Health, chaired by the same council member, Councilmember Christina Henderson. The full five are PR 25-740 Commission on Health Equity Nicole Strachan or Strachan, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-741 Commission on Health Equity Mighty Fine, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-742 Commission on Health Equity Dr. Siana Lynn Hales Barker, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-743 Commission on Health Equity Hannah Lopez Van Bellen, Confirmation Resolution of 2024, and PR 25-744 Commission on Health Equity Linda Elam, Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Commission on Health Equity was established in 2016 to create comprehensive recommendations for the Department of Health, the council, and the mayor that examine and address health inequities across the district and differing opportunities for healthcare by demographic, subpopulations, and geographic areas. I will note that this commission has not met since 2021, but through conversations with DC Health and the nominees, the committee understands that the commission plans to reconvene, to publish updated reports, and to advise DC Health, the council, and the mayor on the best ways to advance and achieve health equity. The council does select three members of the commission, and I have been in touch with DC Health about the process for us to appoint new members. Now to the five nominees. PR 25-740 nominates Nicole Strachan as a voting member with expertise in early learning and education for the Commission on Health Equity for a term ending February 1st, 2026. Ms. Strachan currently serves as a speech pathologist at MedStar Georgetown University Hospital and Howard University Hospital. Ms. Strachan has worked as a speech language pathologist for over a decade, including within DC public schools. She holds a Master's of Science in Speech Pathology from New York Medical College and a Master of Science in Bioethics from Columbia University and a Master's of Divinity Degree from Howard University. She's a Ward three resident. PR 25-741 nominates Mighty Fine as a voting member with expertise in minority communities and population health outcomes and improvements for a term to end February 1st, 2026. Mr. Fine currently serves as the president and CEO of Mighty Fine Consulting LLC and is the director of the Center for Public Health Practice and Professional Development at the American Public Health Association. He holds a Master's of Public Health Degree from Yale Public, Yale University School of Public Health and Epidemiology. He is a Ward six resident. PR 25-742 nominates Dr. Siana Lynn Hales Barker as a voting member with expertise in minority community populations, excuse me, in minority communities and population health outcomes and improvements for a term to end February 1st, 2025. Dr. Lynn Hales Barker is currently the chief of programs and community service at La Clinica de Pueblo, a federally qualified health center in the district where she oversees community-facing programs that address social and structural determinants of health. Dr. Lynn Hales Barker previously conducted research for the State University of Rio de, Rio de Janeiro's Center for Adolescent Health Studies. She also earned a Doctor of Science in Public Health from the National School of Public Health in Brazil, and she is a Ward four resident. PR 25-743 nominates Anna Lopez Van Bellen as a voting member with expertise in economic and community development for a term to end February 1st, 2025. Ms. Van Bellen is currently the Vice President of Economic Security and Justice at Futures Without Violence. Previously, she served as the Affordable Housing Preservation Officer at the Department of Housing and Community Development, helping to preserve the diminishing stock of affordable housing here in the district. She then became the first Director of Housing Policy and Programs. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to need additional time to move five nominations in block. Thank you. She then first became the first Director of Housing Policy and Programs and the Officer of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, where she oversaw housing-related initiatives across the government. Ms. Van Bellen earned her Master's of Science in Social Work from Columbia University, and she is a Ward one resident. Finally, PR 25-744 nominates Dr. Linda Elam for a reappointment as a voting member of the board, excuse me, of the commission with a term to end February 1st, 2026. She currently serves as the Chief Executive Officer and Plan President for AmeriGroup District of Columbia. Previously, Dr. Elam served as the directed, excuse me, as the Director of the Office of Disability, Aging, and Long-Term Care Policy at the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Dr. Elam earned her PhD in Health Policy and Management from Johns Hopkins University and is a Ward five resident. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move all five nominations, ask for my colleagues to support them, and that these nominations be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there questions from members? Hearing on, Madam General Counsel, is, are these measures legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, they are.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete for each?
Yes.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, these measures will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. There's no objection. The next one, two, three, four measures concerning the Board of Medicine will be considered in block. PR 25-Jet 758 Board of Medicine Miriam Michael Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-Jet 759 Board of Medicine William Strudwick Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-Jet 760 Board of Medicine Amar Madkur Confirmation Resolution of 24, and PR 25-Jet 761 Board of Medicine Harry Barbie Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. PR 25-758 nominates Dr. Miriam Michael as a licensed physician member of the Board of Medicine for a term to end August 3rd, 2027. Dr. Michael is a physician at Howard University Hospital and the medical director of the American Renal Associated Dialysis Center. Dr. Michael received her Doctor of Medicine from Howard University. She is a Ward one resident. At the roundtable, I discussed with Dr. Michael her passion for patient-centered care and specifically increasing trust for physicians when it comes to vaccines and routine immunizations within primary care. PR 25-759 nominates Dr. William Strudwick for a reappointment as a licensed physician member for the Board of Medicine for a term to end August 3rd, 2026. This would be Dr. Strudwick's third and final term on the board. He's currently the Chair of Emergency Medicine at Howard University Hospital and previously served as the Medical Director of the Emergency Care Center at Providence Hospital from 2024 to 2023. Dr. Strudwick received his Doctor of Medicine degree from Howard University and is a Ward four resident. At the roundtable, Dr. Strudwick described how fulfilling, how fulfilling serving on the board has been and his desire to increase the use of AI and technology to, to improve the board's overall efficiency. PR 25-760 nominates Dr. Amar Amra, excuse me, Madcor as a licensed physician member of the Board of Medicine for a term to end August 3rd, 2026. Dr. Madcor is an obstetrician and gynecologist at George Washington Medical Faculty Associates, as well as an assistant professor at GW School of Medicine and Health Sciences. He received his Doctor of Medicine from Texas Tech School of Medicine and is a Ward five resident. At the roundtable, I discussed with Dr. Madcor his additional qualifications in integrative medicine and his passion for bringing more whole-person care into the medical profession. Finally, Dr., oh, excuse me, PR 25-761 nominates Dr. Harry Barbie as a consumer member of the Board of Medicine for a term to end August 3rd, 2025. Dr. Barbie is an assistant professor in the Department of Health Behavior and Society at Johns Hopkins University. Dr. Barbie holds a PhD in Sociology from Florida State University and focuses their research on gender, sexuality, aging, and health, particularly within LGBTQ populations. They are a Ward one resident. At the roundtable, Dr. Barbie discussed their research on LGBTQ health disparities and aging and desire to bring this expertise to developing policies within the Board of Medicine. I'll just add with my 30 seconds here. There are 19 boards and commissions under the Health Cluster under the Department of Health. So this is a PSA for anyone who would like to serve. We have vacancies. Please visit the mayor's Office of Talent and Appointment website and sign up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I missed that very last part.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that these four nominees be approved by the Committee of the Whole and that they be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting.
Thank you. Of course, the Committee of the Whole is not actually voting on these. We're just simply passing them through. And if there are no questions from members? Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally, are the measures legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, they are.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete for each?
Yes.
Madam Budget Director, do the measure's fiscal impact statements comply with council requirements?
Yes, they do.
Without objection, these measures will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. The next measure is PR 25-786 Board of Podiatry Teresa Hilliard Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. PR 25-786 nominates Dr. Teresa Hilliard as a Licensed Podiatrist Member of the Board of Podiatry for a term to end August 16th, 2027. Dr. Hilliard was first confirmed to the Board in 2006 and currently serves as the Chair of the Board. Dr. Hilliard is the founder and CEO of Family Podiatry LLC, a medical practice located in Landover, Maryland. Her practice serves senior communities and medical faculties at, excuse me, medical facilities such as the George Washington University Hospital and Howard University Hospital. Dr. Hilliard received her Doctor of Podiatric Medicine from New York College of Podiatric Medicine, and she is a Ward V resident. I ask that this nomination be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there questions from members? Madam General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Yes.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes.
No objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. There's no objection. The next three measures will be considered in block. They are each confirmations regarding the Board of Dentistry. PR 25-791 Board of Dentistry Dr. Chanel Roberts. Confirmation Resolution of 2024. PR 25-792 Board of Dentistry Dr. Amani Lewis. Confirmation Resolution of 2024. And PR 25-793 Board of Dentistry Dr. Michelle Latour. Confirmation Resolution of 2024. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. PR 25-791 nominates Dr. Chanel Roberts as a Voting Member of the Board of Dentistry as a Licensed Dentist in the District of Columbia with a term to end November 30th, 2025. Dr. Roberts is a general dentist at Capital Dental and has worked in the Maryland Center for Aesthetic Dentistry. Dr. Roberts earned her Doctor of Dental Surgery from the University of Missouri, Kansas City, and she is a Ward V resident. PR 25-792 nominates Dr. Amani Lewis as a Voting Member to the Board of Dentistry as a periodontist licensed in the District of Columbia with a term to end November 30th, 2025. Dr. Lewis owns and operates Lewis Periodontics and associates PLLC, a periodontal practice in the district. He earned his Doctor of Dental Surgery degree from the University of Michigan and is a Ward IV resident. And finally, PR 25-793 nominates Dr. Michelle Latour as a Voting Member of the Board of Dentistry as a Licensed Dentist with a term to end November 30th, 2025. Dr. Latour owns and operates the dental, excuse me, District Dental Services, a DC-based nonprofit that provides dental services for unserved communities, and she is a Ward VIII resident. I'll just add my PSA once again, as we have 19 Boards and Commissions that have a vital service to the healthcare workforce of the District of Columbia that we have many vacancies for. Mr. Chairman, I ask that these three nominations be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Are there questions from members? Madam General Counsel, are these three measures legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, they are.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete for each?
Yes.
Madam Budget Director, do the measure's fiscal impact statements comply with council requirements?
Yes, they do.
No objection, these measures will be placed on the consent agenda for today's legislative meeting. That concludes the items for this Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm trying to remember. We're not sure. There may be a Committee of the Whole meeting next week on the 18th, and if not, on the 25th, and if not, on the 9th. I'm sure we will have several more Committee of the Whole meetings before the council recess. We will start the legislative meeting in five minutes. Time is 12:30 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. I'm calling the order of this meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the District of Columbia. It's our 25th legislative meeting of Council 325. I'm Phil Mendelson, Chair of the Council. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. The time is 12:37 in the afternoon. And this meeting is being held in Room 500, the Council Chambers of the John Wilson Building. One member is participating virtually, Councilmember Trayon White. We always begin our legislative meetings with a moment of silence and opportunity for reflection. If we could have everyone silent in the chambers for a moment or two. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Gray.
Councilmember Gray.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Louis George.
Here.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Here.
Chair Mendelson.
Present.
Councilmember Nadeau.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Pinto.
Present.
Councilmember Robert White.
Present.
Councilmember Trayon White.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
I thank you, Madam Secretary. We have the Secretary's Report of Committee Filings. I'm going to recognize the Chair, Pro Tem, Kenyon McDuffie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to move to waive the reading of the Secretary's Report.
It's a motion to waive the reading of the report. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion to waive the reading, say aye.
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 That was a neema. We'll try again. All those in favor of waiving the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We have the Secretary's Report of Introductions and Referrals. Again, I'm going to recognize the Chair, Pro Tem, Councilmember McDuffie.
And I will move to waive the reading of the Secretary's Report of Introductions.
It's a motion to waive the reading. Is there discussion? And the motion to waive the reading, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We have the consent agenda. There's one item that's been removed from the consent agenda that I know of, and that's on Page 3, under Reading and Vote of Proposed Resolutions. PR 25-642 is removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none. We have the consent agenda before us. Madam Secretary, roll call or voice vote. We'll have a voice vote on the consent agenda. Again, this is the consent agenda with the one item removed. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Do not see or hear any no votes? The ayes have it unanimously. We will turn to the one measure that was removed. I have a statement of recusal that I'm going to read. The resolution is PR 25-642 Commission on the Arts and Humanities Gretchen Wharton Confirmation Resolution of 2024. The statement is, I, Brooke Pinto, hereby provide notice of my recusal in the following matter before the Council effective June 11th, 2024. PR 25-642 Commission on the Arts and Humanities Gretchen Wharton Confirmation Resolution of 2024. My decision to recuse arises from the following conflict, potential conflict, or appearance of conflict. The nominee serves as an unpaid volunteer in an official capacity regarding political activities in which I engage outside of the Council. The measure would not impact my financial interests or the financial interests of anyone with whom I am closely affiliated, as described in Rule 1 of the Council's Code of Conduct. I do not have any actual or potential conflict in this matter. Nevertheless, I'm recusing myself to avoid any appearance of a conflict in this matter. Pursuant to Rule 1 of the Council of the District of Columbia Code of Official Conduct, I'm recusing myself from any participation in the matter and will not attempt to influence the outcome of the matter because of the noted conflict, potential conflict, or appearance of conflict. The, this resolution, PR 25-642, was presented and marked up at the Committee of the Whole. I move it now. Is there discussion? By a voice vote, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is approved unanimously. We will turn to the non-consent agenda, which is on page seven of the agenda. I'm sorry, page six of the agenda. And this is reading and vote on emergency legislation. The first measure is Anacostia Business Improvement District Emergency Declaration Resolution of 2024. PR 25-753. Councilmember Trayon White.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be removing this emergency legislation today, pending some other requests from other members to get them what they need so they can feel comfortable and supporting. There's very important measures that's critical to ensure business development in Waring. So I will send that to the members that we have today. Thank you. I will be drawing the measure.
Thank you, Councilmember White. So the measure has been withdrawn. We'll turn to Department of Higher Vehicles, Delivery Vehicle Traffic Enforcement Expansion Emergency Declaration Resolution of 2024. PR 25-844. Councilmember Allen Ornado.
I think it's me, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. Say this is an emergency, is a gap filler to keep laws that are already in effect to ensure authority remains in place for the Department of Higher Vehicles to enforce traffic and safety violations against all types of rideshare drivers. There is a permanent bill that is in the Committee on Public Works and Operations, which is introduced by myself and Councilman Nadeau. They'll be moving soon to the full council for a vote. So this emergency legislation is necessary to ensure that the existing law does not expire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with that, I move the declaration.
Thank you. Councilmember Nadeau, do you wish to speak?
Councilmember Allen handled it beautifully.
It was teamwork. It was great teamwork.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
He did a wonderful job, but I wouldn't get carried away. We have the declaration before us. Is there discussion? By a voice vote on the declaration, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I do not hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. The underlying bill, Bill 25-836. Councilmember Allen.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Discussion. By a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I don't hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. The next measure is PR 25-842 Vulnerable Youth Guardianship Protection Emergency Declaration Resolution of 2024. Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This measure is essentially the same as a congressional review emergency to prevent a gap in the law between the temporary law expiring and the permanent law going into effect. The temporary law is set to expire this July 10th. While the Council passed a permanent version of this bill, Bill 25-44, on May 7th, 2024, the permanent law is currently undergoing congressional review. Since congressional review will not be complete prior to the expiration of the temporary law, this emergency legislation is necessary to prevent a gap in the law. I want to note that this emergency mirrors the permanent version of the bill in incorporating minor technical tweaks and one substantive change not included in the expiring temporary law, namely the elimination of fees for filing guardianship petitions. I move the- I move the emergency declaration. Mr. Chairman, I move the emergency declaration.
Thank you, Councilmember Pinto. Is there discussion? By a voice vote on PR twenty-five dash eight forty-two, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't hear any, hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. The underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash eight thirty-three, Vulnerable Youth Guardianship Protection Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Pinto.
I move the emergency bill.
Discussion. By a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I was a little weak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Uh, and the measure is approved. Uh, the next measure is PR twenty-five dash eight fifty-two, Pesticide Operations Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, Rodenticide Act requires that states certify pesticide applicators in accordance with a state certification plan approved by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The district's latest certification plan approved by the EPA on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, identifies legislative and regulatory changes that the district must make to meet federal requirements. The EPA established deadline for final adoption of those regulations is October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. On March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Committee on Transportation and the Environment held a public hearing on Bill twenty-five dash five six nine, the Pesticide Operations Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three, which was the introduced bill. Once passed, will allow DOE, it will make it, it will make the regulatory changes needed for compliance with the impending deadline. While the committee intends to act on the introduced bill, the time it takes for the introduced bill to complete the legislative process, uh, which it will be to receive the two, two votes at full council, be transmitted to the mayor for signature, and be transmitted to Congress for the mandatory congressional review period will likely prevent DOE from completing the rulemaking before that EPA established deadline. So, that emergency legislation is now necessary to enable DOE to complete the rulemaking process before the EPA established deadline expires or is met. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move the declaration.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Uh, we have the declaration before us. Is there discussion? By a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't hear or see any, uh, no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. Resolution is approved. The underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash eight forty-three, Pestified, uh, Pesticide Operations Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Allen.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. By a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, the ayes have it unanimously. The bill is approved. PR twenty-five dash eight fifty-three, D.C. Water Critical Infrastructure Freedom of Information Clarification Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The district's Freedom of Information Act exempts companies that are regulated by the Public Service Commission from disclosing critical infrastructure information or plans that contain critical infrastructure information. D.C. Water is not regulated by the PSC and therefore is not covered by the exemption in the Act or any similar exemption. As a result, under current law, D.C. Water could be required to disclose information that could jeopardize the security of the district's critical water and sewer infrastructure. On September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Council passed the D.C. Water Critical Infrastructure Freedom of Information Clarification Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three, which extended the critical infrastructure exemption to D.C. Water. Temporary legislation is set to expire on July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Bill twenty-five dash four two four, the D.C. Water Critical Information, Critical Infrastructure Freedom of Information Clarification Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-three is a permanent bill that is substantially similar to the temporary legislation. The Committee on Transportation and the Environment held a public hearing on Bill twenty-five dash four two four on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, but is not yet scheduled time to consider and vote on the bill, but will soon. This emergency legislation is therefore necessary to prevent a gap in the law between the expiration of the temporary legislation and the approval of Bill twenty-five dash four two five. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move the declaration.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there discussion? Uh, on the declaration, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I don't hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. Declaration is approved. We have the underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash eight forty-five, D.C. Water Critical Infrastructure Freedom of Information Clarification Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Allen.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Don't see or hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. And the bill's approved. The next measure is Walter Reed Development Assistance Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-four, PR twenty-five dash eight forty-three. Councilmember Louis George.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, we passed the language in this bill unanimously last year on an emergency and temporary basis. Um, today's legislation simply extends the mayor's authority under the emergency and temporary until the Budget Support Act goes into effect with a permanent version of this bill. Uh, the, the second round of emergency temporary legislation will simply, this second round of emergency temporary legislation will simply prevent a temporal gap, um, in the law. Uh, the rationale for the legislation remains the same as it was last year. It's necessary to the completion, the critical infrastructure of the Walter Reed Development, uh, as well, providing these funds is necessary to ensure the development includes key infrastructure promises to the community. In particular, our investment supports the completion of Main Drive Northwest as a critical east-west route, uh, for pedestrian, bikers, and motorists. Um, I would urge my colleagues to support this measure, and I move the emergency declaration resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds.
Um, thank you, and thank you very much for, um, recognizing me. I, I want to understand clearly what this, um, measure covers, uh, because I'm hearing from my colleague that it covers critical infrastructure. Um, the letter we got from the mayor indicated that, uh, we should not be in the posture of, uh, augmenting costs that, uh, should be borne by, uh, developers. So, I'm trying to understand what, what does this legislation really do?
Yeah. Um, when we talked about it last year, uh, when Walter Reed site began development, originally, they were told, uh, we were told that the infrastructure, they would not need to change sort of, uh, pipes for water, electricity. The infrastructure wouldn't be needed to have people on campus. Um, and then, as they start digging and doing development, uh, it was said that we needed, the pipes need to be replaced. Um, so when I say infrastructure, I mean like water, pipes, uh, utilities, et cetera. Um, uh, and, and, um, the street, streetscapes so that we could run, you know, like cars and pedestrians can actually run through the property. Um, and so that was the additional last year that, that came up is, uh, originally, we didn't think we're going to have to replace them. I, I mean, I think from the beginning, people should have realized this is an old campus, and they were going to need to replace these things, but for whatever reason, they didn't think so at the time. Um, so that's what I mean by infrastructure, really like the, the utility infrastructure needs that have to be there to sustain the thousands of new residents that are currently there and that are going to be there in the future.
Thank you very much for that, because I think it's important that the community recall that, um, when we talk about infrastructure and new, um, projects across the city, it has been customary for the city to, um, bring the utilities, which are part of the infrastructure, to a project. So, I, I just want a clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. Further discussion or? We have the, uh, declaration before us. By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I don't hear or see any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. Underlying bill, Bill twenty-five dash eight thirty-four, Walter Reed Development Assistance Emergency Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Louis George.
Still moved.
Discussion. By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Don't hear or see any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. The bill is approved. We have temporary measures. There's no objection. I'll move the temporary measures in block. They would be Lafayette Elementary School Grass Field Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, Bill twenty-five dash eight oh eight. Department of For Higher Vehicles, Delivery Vehicle Traffic Enforcement Expansion Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, Bill twenty-five dash eight thirty-seven. Pesticide Operations Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, Bill twenty-five dash eight forty-four. D.C. Water Critical Infrastructure Freedom of Information Clarification Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, Bill twenty-five dash eight forty-six. And Walter Reed Development Assistance Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four, Bill twenty-five dash eight thirty-five. Is there discussion? On these two, four, five measures, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't see or hear any no votes. The ayes have it unanimously. All, one, two, three, four, five bills are approved, first reading unanimously. We will turn now to new business. There is a motion for reconsideration of Bill twenty-five dash seven thirty-six, Secure D.C. Omnibus Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Council adopted a temporary version of the Secure D.C. Omnibus, Omnibus Amendment Act at the April second legislative meeting. However, because the Council also adopted the permanent version of Secure D.C. at the March fifth legislative meeting, which the mayor later signed into law, the temporary bill is now unnecessary. Because of that, I am going to move to reconsider Bill twenty-five seven thirty-six for the purpose of moving to postpone that bill indefinitely. Again, this has no substantive impact. It's just that the temporary is no longer necessary. I move to reconsider Bill twenty-five dash seven three six.
Thank you, Councilmember Pinto. There's been a motion to reconsider the bill. Is there discussion? On the motion to reconsider, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We have the bill, Secure D.C. Omnibus Temporary Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-four before us. Councilmember.
Can you record me as voting present?
I. Yes, just a moment. If you would hold a moment, Councilmember Pinto. Uh, on the motion for reconsideration, record, Councilmember Trayon White is present. On the bill, which is now before us, Bill twenty-five dash seven thirty-six, Councilmember Pinto.
I move to postpone Bill twenty-five dash seven thirty-six indefinitely.
Is there discussion? Not hearing any. By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Councilmember White, are you present or are you voting?
I'm a y-
What's that?
He's putting a motion to postpone indefinitely. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yes, aye.
Uh, the motion to postpone indefinitely is approved unanimously. Just a moment. I believe I said that the motion to postpone indefinitely was approved unanimously. That's going to conclude this meeting. Uh, the Committee of the Whole, I believe, meets next week.
On May.
Am I right? Madam Secretary? And, uh, we will, we are trying to, um, have the Budget Support Act ready for considerations at that meeting. Well, not at the Committee of the Whole, but at an additional legis- legislative meeting on that date. Otherwise, it will be March twenty, excuse me, June twenty-fifth. We'll get through this. The time is one o'clock PM, and this meeting is adjourned.